I have a Harley Road King classic.
Without knocking, can you make sure he's ready?
He's ready.
It's all good?
I know Bill's always ready.
I took the glass.
Okay. All right.
Weighs 900 pounds.
Sorry. We will call to order the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners' special meeting for Thursday, May 4th. And if we could stand, and Sonny will lead us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay, first we're going to have first public comment, and Sarah will read the rules. Oh, let's have roll call. It's not on the list, though, but let's have roll call. Klaus?
Here.
Gorklet? Here. Johnson?
Present.
Lethro?
Yes.
Mayor?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Crawford?
Here.
Now, we're going to have first public comment, and Sarah's going to read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures: A, any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address; B, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once. On the same matter, excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, the chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Anybody like to make public comment at this time? There'll be another chance afterwards. Actually, there'll be a lot of chances, so. Okay. We will move on. We have a presentation by Gov. HR. Mr. James Betrino is going to talk to us about the process for getting a new county administrator. So, we're going to, it's going to be a little bit more lax meeting and interactive. This is so that he can get to know us, and we can get to know what the process is. At some point, I'll ask if anybody from the audience has anything to say as well. So, a little bit more laid back than normal, but don't get out of hand.
She's looking at you.
James.
I think she was looking at you, Ron.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for having me here this evening. I appreciated the opportunity to meet a couple of you today, and tomorrow I'll have an opportunity to interview a number of more folks, both elected officials and appointed officials of the county. We'll start. Again, my name is James Betrino. I work with Gov. HR. I'm one of their vice presidents. I'm out of southeast Michigan, and I have their Michigan territory. I have an opportunity to work with communities in their executive search needs, and it reuses a passion of mine to find the fit. You know, you can have great candidates and great communities. You can have bad candidates and not-so-awesome communities, and it's always about the fit, though. Some candidates are great for a community that may not work in another community. And that is the entire goal of my being here, both today and tomorrow, is to understand this community. I've read the website. I've watched some of the meetings. I have come to Traverse City on vacation, but my goal is to really understand the organization in and after it then, to find the candidates to apply for this position. At the end of the day, the selection process is a duty of the Commission. My role is simply to find the best group of candidates that I can possibly find for the Commissioners to make their selection. I spent 17 years as a city manager before, now I work at a local college down in southeast Michigan, and work with Gov. HR. So, I've had the opportunity to view things as an administrator and worked with elected officials for many, many years. And I hope that experience helps both when I have an opportunity with elected officials and then I can interview candidates in the pre-screening process. We're part of Phase 1 right now. So, Phase 1 is, my goal is to get enough information for the next two days to develop a position announcement, which looks something like that.
James?
Yes?
I'm sorry, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, you have to talk in the microphone so that people at home can hear you.
Thank you.
Because you're on TV.
All right.
Okay. You're good.
The, uh, thank you very much. The first thing we will develop is a position announcement, and this will be a short, one-page description of the community, and the position, and what we're looking for to fill. We'll have that complete shortly after my visit here on Thursday and Friday. Then, there's a second piece that we'll develop, and this is a three- or four-page, full-color with pictures, really accentuating the positive aspects of Grand Traverse County, as well as stating the candidates that we would like to try to apply for this position. That's Phase 1. Then, that'll be about one to two weeks. That will then go out to the market and start Phase 2, which is actually us taking those pieces in their different forms to try and enhance or attract candidates to come. We start with some of the basic advertising. So, we'll advertise in MML's executive search area. We'll advertise in ICMA's. We'll advertise in a number of the governmental publications where you would normally find an advertisement for a county administrator. We will also advertise on our website. Gov. HR has become a resource, particularly in the Midwest. We get about 5,000 visits a month, individuals looking for positions that we're posting. I should mention, Gov. HR exclusively does government and nonprofit executive search. So, as you can imagine, that's what mostly folks are looking for when they're hitting our website. The next piece, which I'm really proud of, is Gov. HR has an extensive use of LinkedIn. In fact, it's been one of our most successful ways to find candidates in recent searches. And we will send out, just like I just posted on the PowerPoint there, a LinkedIn message. It'll come through me, it'll come through Heidi Voorhees, our president, and that's where we will attract non-governmental and governmental candidates. LinkedIn has done a really nice job of kind of coalescing the market and really does a good job for those individuals that are interested in management positions of any type, or maybe want something different. It'll hit their feeds on their LinkedIn account. We're very active in that social media area. Less so in the other social media pieces, but we also will post in other areas, but it's really LinkedIn where we found some success. We also use our own internal dashboard, and that's the last picture that I just put up there. We have candidates, because we're a governmental and nonprofit recruiting firm, we have candidates that we've recently interviewed for another county in Wisconsin that, hey, you were the second pick here, why don't you try to look at this brochure and tell me if it's a nice fit for you? In addition, we purchase lists, email addresses of individuals that may be interested in this position. So, we can, we can sort that list by the type of organization they're currently managing, the type of pay they're currently managing, or currently receiving, excuse me, and then they will get direct emails from us based on the position descriptions that we get developed over the next two days here. So, we'll send those email blasts out. And finally, you know, there's the good old telephone, you know, picking up the phone and saying, hey, I know you're interested in another opportunity, another challenge, why don't you try and take a look at the recruitment brochure and put your name in? Those are the main aspect, or the main areas that we're going to put this advertisement out in. And that, that chunk of time is about six weeks. We always say no more, I'm sorry, no less than four weeks, because a lot of the publications are on monthly still. And even on the LinkedIn, it takes some time before it works onto the top of the feed when somebody happens to be opening up their account, and that recent experience is showing us, four to six weeks, you can really start to have that positive candidate pool. I'm talking a little fast. Feel free to interrupt me at any point with questions if you have them as we go through. Obviously, I'll leave plenty of time at the end for any questions or comments. The next phase, so, I've understood the community, we've got it out in the world, now we're getting candidates coming in, and we're going to begin the candidate screening and evaluation. So, every candidate application that we receive, I will personally review. We don't use any technology to weed out buzzwords, or keywords, or anything like that. Every candidate that comes in, we view as a valid. They took the time to get the application process through the Gov. HR site, and we're going to take the time and respect their application. Once we receive a good number, I'll start to go through, and we'll start to give them stars. You know, this, if you meet all qualifications, you will rise up, and if there's some qualifications you don't meet, and we'll start to get some stratification of those resumes and of those applications as they come in. At any point in the process, the, whoever the hiring committee's going to be, or that first screening committee's going to be, or the whole Board, however the Board would like to do it, can have access to those raw resumes to any parts of this process. Our standard process is, we would go through, and I would select candidates, maybe there's a dozen candidates, that we ask to supply additional information. We like their resume, but we want to find out a little bit more about them. We will also start doing some formal and informal reference checks on that number of candidates. Again, it's very dependent on the community of how many candidates reach that first call the references to make sure that they've, they've provided us valid contacts. Still at a very high level. We'll do a social media search, an internet search, on every candidate that reached this first phase. It's very important that we understand what is out there. It's actually, to be honest with you, kind of hard to keep up with everybody else. As soon as people find out names, probably some of you may searched Gov. HR and found my name and done a little, that's just the world we live in, and individuals have to be made aware of that. And if we find anything on an individual that doesn't match their resume, we will contact them and let them know, and give them an opportunity to explain, because sometimes there's, there's information that isn't always matching, and we want to give anybody that is a potential candidate that opportunity to explain any discrepancy we find. Finally, I'll get to a number, and whether it's with the committee, or the Board, or just if you'd like to have Gov. HR choose that seven to 10 number that we'll actually do Skype interviews with. So, I will do a Skype interview with a number of candidates, and we'll have a conversation. It's great to have the paper. It's great to do the social media search. It's great to think you know them. We found Skype is a great tool, that I can actually, you know, have the conversation, start to feel either their passion, or their knowledge, or based on my interviews over the days that I'm here, is it a match? You can start to take notes. So, I hopefully will get to know these people on a relatively good level through that Skype interview process. Finally, Gov. HR takes a lot of pride in acknowledging every candidate that puts an application in. We, on your behalf, will professionally acknowledge everyone that takes part in this process. We, I particularly take very, I understand my responsibility that when I'm in this process, I'm representing Grand Traverse County, and we will treat our candidates in a way that reflect positively on you at every stage of the way. Finally, we get to Phase 4, which is recommended candidates. So, however we get to this point, and again, this is our recommended process, this is the process that we put in our proposal, but please know I am open to taking a different direction if there are suggestions at any point in this process. Phase 4 would be a recruitment report. So, this is where we have that, whatever number of candidates. Maybe it's seven, maybe it's five, it's some number of candidates, where we will prepare binders of a report on each candidate, laid out in a way so that each candidate, you, we do away with the fluff of the cover letter and the resume, that's there in the file, too, but we try and make each candidate look consistent, so that we can start to really look at them as their credentials and qualifications, as opposed to just their resume and their cover letter. I will come out and meet with the Board as a whole, or the committee, however the Board would like, and we will talk about each of those candidates, because at that point, I would have Skype interviewed everybody in the binder. So, I will get to be able to talk with you about those candidates individually. At this point, it still usually is some committee of the Board, as opposed to the Board as a whole, because we honor the confidentiality of the candidates themselves. We will operate absolutely within the open records law and the sunshine laws in Michigan, but it's also important, particularly at this level, that the candidates can have some comfort in knowing that they are interested, but that they're protected from publicity. At the next phase, the candidates become public, and we give them every opportunity to understand that and know that. Most of them really understand this well, especially those that are on the government's side, but it is not like the private sector, where you get to go through the entire process till the very end, before you have an opportunity to be on public display, if you will. For the interview process, so, now we've figured out how many of our candidates we're going to interview from the binder. Maybe it's all of them that we want to interview, maybe it's some subset of it. I will be back for that process. We will develop the questions in cooperation with the Board, and then the Board will start its first round of interviews, or a committee of the Board. The first round, you have that five candidate pool. We always encourage a second round, even if you really think you know what you want after the first round, and we always want the candidates to have that opportunity to come back and have that second round. Having said that, there are times where it's very evident after round one of the match, and we move forward from there. But it's, what's most important at that point is that the community really understands the candidate, and the candidate understands the community. At this point, they are, they are here in the county, they have taken a tour of the county, they have understood what the, what the opportunity is here. Finally, you get to appointment, which is what we're pushing towards, and Gov. HR can step away at this point, after the candidate is selected, and let the Board render whatever decision it might in terms of an offer, or we're more than happy to help craft an offer, work through an offer, whatever your pleasure is at that point, I am perfectly comfortable with, and Gov. HR is also perfectly comfortable with. Again, once a candidate accepts, Gov. HR will contact every candidate that has been interviewed, or that I've had contact with that hasn't gotten the earlier notice, that they weren't moved on to the next level, and we will have a very specific conversation with them about the process, and about the candidate that was selected, and about their opportunities to improve, and their opportunities to grow. Again, we take very seriously our representation of the county and each of the candidates that we, that we have a chance to talk with. Finally, you know, sometimes you like to talk about a guarantee, and sometimes you don't like to talk about a guarantee. We do offer a guarantee on this process. It's a two-year guarantee, that if the administrator leaves for any reason, theirs or yours, we will do the search again, at no cost other than travel and expenses for the, for the county. We've had to utilize that guarantee less than 1% of our searches, but, but we believe that our process should make a quality match for both the candidate and the community. One of the reasons why I really like Gov. HR, they did the search for my position when I left my city, and it was really clear to me that they got to know the candidates and the community. And I think a lot of firms focus a lot on the community and miss the candidate part. And I do, I do believe that that match that we're trying to make is worthy of a two-year appointment guarantee, and we will stand by that, again, regardless of the reason that there might have to be a change. Our timeline. So, this is about a 12-week process. I can't give it to you by the day, but I think we're comfortable, based on our history of, by the week. So, Phase 1, we've got one to two weeks. The longest phase is this advertising and candidate evaluation and screening. That'll be weeks three to eight. Week nine, we'll have those binders ready for the Board to start their consideration. 10, 11, and 12 is interview and appointment. Those, that'll, that can, we can pick up a week or two at most. I'm hoping we don't extend more than two to three weeks. I think this is a really proven timeline, but of course, there's things that happen. Some of these require scheduling of public meetings, some require candidates to give notice, some require candidate travel arrangements. So, while I present this as a timeline, please know that this is the standard timeline within reasonable expectation. The last piece is probably my most important slide for this evening. Gov. HR, I personally want all the information and feedback that I can get. While I'm going to do personal interviews today and tomorrow, anyone in the community, any employees of the county that wishes to fill out a survey and talk about what they would like to see in the next county administrator, I strongly encourage them to do so. The survey's online, and I have the link up there, but what's much easier is if you take my card, or contact the county building, and I'll figure out how to say that better, or somebody around the table needs to figure out how to tell them who to contact, and you can find my email. They'll give you my email, and I will send you a copy of the survey. You click on the link, and you complete the survey. The county also can probably provide that directly to you from their offices. If there's an opportunity to post it on the county website, we would be open to that, too. It's a simple survey. There's five questions. It's talking, it's going to give us that feedback for me to be able to create the recruitment brochure that most clearly reflects the needs and desires of this community. Again, to repeat myself, please grab one of my cards at the end of the session. If you would like me to send you the survey, please contact the county if you're talking, if you're watching on TV. The important piece, and I'll say this twice, is it be complete within about the next four to five days. Again, the important part is that if you are interested in giving your comments, your feedback, I receive that early next week, because we're on a one to two week for me to turn around the recruitment brochure. So, in order to be able to consider fairly all of the comments that come in from anyone completing the survey, I really need that information by early next week. Again, it should take you a few minutes to complete. I think it's a good way to garner public opinion. You can sit with a coffee and really think about what you want to say about this process, or about the next county administrator, as opposed to at a public meeting, me jotting down everything everybody says real quickly. I'm happy to do that. I did it for 17 years as a, as a city administrator myself, but I find that folks can give me that thoughtful opinion that I can then take and use for the recruitment brochure, much better on a digital survey. That's all I have. I'd be happy to take questions.
Before we go to any questions, for the public out there that would like the survey, my information is on the Board of Commissioners' page on the county website. So, you can email me, or you can call me, and so for the next five days or so, I will make sure I have it with me. And just call me or email me, and I'll make sure that you get the link, so that you can fill out the survey. So, then we'll go to questions. Dan?
Real quick, tomorrow, you're going to be interviewing me at 12:30. Would you want me to fill out that, that survey, too, or will you get the info you need just for my interview?
Good question. Those that are being interviewed individually do not need to complete the survey. I will have time to go two and three questions deep on some of these, and I'll have those notes.
Thank you.
Cheryl? Did you have, oh, Tom?
What do you think, in federal government, what do you think of the KSA format, the Knowledge Skills and Abilities format? Do you like that, or?
You know, it certainly can be used, and we can format some of our questions and answers in that, in that format. I guess I'm a little more homey in my interviewing. I like to know the fit, so we may go down a path of, does the candidate fit, and that may not be exactly the Knowledge Skills format. So, I'm open to reviewing that type of process as part of it, but I also encourage the Board, and certainly for me during the Skype interviews, to understand the person, because I think that personality fit, that, that community fit, is just as important as the knowledge and skills and abilities.
Do you think that's still, like, is that current today? Is that still popular? Is that was when it first came out, or?
That, that's a great question, and I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I just know what, what Gov. HR is very comfortable with and is focused on for at least the last three to four years is, it's that Skype interview, I can't say enough of how impressed I am on what that can reveal of candidates. And I think, right now, it's an employee market. In other words, employees have the advantage in many markets, including local government. There are a lot of good employees out there that are available for employment, and they are, they are in demand. So, in order to get them interested in your community, I think you really need to market your community very specifically of why it's a fit for them. So, maybe it's evolved a little bit into finding fit, as opposed to just finding the skills and knowledge that match the position description. I hope I didn't go way to the side on that.
No, that's fine. What about, oh, can I ask one more question? Sorry. What was I going to say? Oh, you know, what's currently the average for a number of years that a county administrator is expected to stay in their job?
I think the last I saw at ICMA, and I think they group city administrators and county administrators in the same, is about four and a half to five years. I think that was the last data that I saw.
Cheryl? Now, you have something to say?
Well, to somebody else, because of course it flew away.
Okay, I'll come back.
It'll come back.
Again, Sonny.
James, having been here longer than most of the carpet in the room, I'm in a situation where, you know, we've had a number of county administrators here since I came here. Rothschild was here for 32 years before he left. Dennis Loy was here for 10 years after that. David Bendah was here for 10 years, and now Tom's going to be, or Bendah was here for two years, and Tom's going to be here for approximately two years. So, I think the reason that I pushed so hard to hire a search firm was to try to get a fit that we didn't have that turnover. You know, we need, we need some stability. You know, county government, just by the nature of itself, and having Commissioners elected to two-year terms, has enough volatility in it all by itself. We need the stability, and I think that was the big thing that we were hoping to get out of this process. That being said, you know, I also think that firms like yourself, and some of the others that we receive proposals from, have the ability to reach outside of our area, to do nationwide searches, which I think is important to us also. We all know this is a destination community. Lots of people would love to be here, but there's more to our community than that, and that's what you and I are going to talk about tomorrow. So, I guess the big thing I'm trying to figure out is, what would you project, and I understand that it's throwing it against the wall, what would you project as a raw number of candidates that we would see in this search?
You know, I, I'm probably not going to give a number, because I don't like to be wrong, and I know I'm going to be wrong no matter the number I say. But what I will answer is, you are correct that it's a destination community. I mean, I've learned a lot about Grand Traverse over the last few weeks, but Grand Traverse and Traverse City generally, as a brand, is a good brand in Michigan and beyond, particularly down the west coast of Michigan, down into the Chicago area. So, I think we're going to get people to click open the brochure, which is the first step, and I'm excited for this search because of that. And if, if they can click open the brochure, understand what the community's looking for, I think we're going to be pleased with the number of candidates that we receive. So, I think you're starting at an advantage, because you have a good outside brand awareness. And I think, obviously, we'll look at candidates very close to here if they apply, and we'll look at a national search. We're not going to limit ourselves to one or the other. So, I won't give a number, but I'm excited about it.
Okay, I remember now.
Do you remember? Okay. So, the, the next week, when you're gathering data, we get to see what you've gathered, or we get to see what you compile before you start sending it out? Is that correct?
Yes, we will send a draft of both the recruitment brochure and the recruitment profile for sign-off from whoever you appoint to sign-off as a Board on those two pieces.
Because obviously, you know, we all are going to think that what we think is probably the most significant, but it'll be interesting to see how many of us agree on what that looks like, and of course, you're getting information from lots of other people besides just us. So, you know, I'm, I'm real curious to see what that bot looks like, so.
Well, we will, we will certainly provide those documents for review and approval before it goes out.
Thank you. Bob?
How many county managers or administrators has your firm hired for Michigan?
Um...
It has, it'd have to be an accurate number.
Right, right. Yeah, I'd have to go back. It hasn't been... It hasn't been recently, we haven't done any county hiring. When I say recently, within the last three years that I'm most familiar with. We've done county administrators in other parts of the country, but I think it's been a while. The predecessor group to Gov HR, I think, actually may have done Grand Traverse County many years ago, the PAR Group, which is the predecessor to Gov HR. But the answer is we haven't done a lot of county administrator hiring in Michigan in the last three years. City management, economic development, those positions, but not county in Michigan.
Anybody else have any questions? I think at this point, we probably should talk a little bit about, do we want some ad-hoc committees? Do we want this to be a full board process the whole way?
I would recommend full board.
Full board process the whole way?
I think it's.
The only, the only piece about the full board is the minute you make it a full board process, anyone that applies becomes public knowledge.
That's the process, though.
Not necessarily because it.
No. If, as soon as he sends the first list of people to the county board as an entirety, if I understood your phase, was it phase two discussion, James? Then it immediately becomes everyone's that applied becomes public.
Well, it becomes FOIA-able. It becomes public information that someone could FOIA.
There's not a difference here. If it's FOIA-able, it will be public knowledge.
But that's part of the process. If you apply for this position, you know at some point it's going to be public knowledge. I'm not willing to, quite frankly, I'm not willing to give this to an ad hoc committee to say, choose the three or four. No, I'm not willing to.
If I may suggest, what may be important to discuss is at what point. Obviously, the full board will render a decision at certain points. So I would encourage you to not involve the full board to that first cut level so that, you know, maybe it's at the seven to five level or whatever you're comfortable with, that first interview process where we prepare the binders. If there's a subcommittee that people are confident with below that to answer questions, to sign off on the brochures, then that would be fine. It does make the process work a little bit quicker if you have a committee or a couple individuals that can sign off on the brochures, that can have conversations with recruiter on, you know, all right, I've got 20. Is there anything we want to talk about to get it down to the seven that goes to the full board? It could be that two-phase process where is there an opportunity for a committee for those early activities and then bring the board in a little bit earlier than usual, which would be that, I'm going to call it, seven candidate stage. But then it is open to open records, and candidates will simply be made aware of it, and they can choose to react appropriately.
What do we think?
What did we do before?
I don't know, Sonny.
Well, in my mind, you know, and Chris probably remembers better than I do, I think we got to that seven to 10 range, and at that point, then the county board made the decisions. And we dealt with that seven to 10 candidates, I believe, you know, the really, the most, you know, probably the most effective process was when we hired David Bendah to replace Ross. And at that point, I believe we narrowed it down to about 10 people. We invited at least seven in for interviews, and then we did a second round of interviews with five, and we made the decision. You know, the important piece of this, you know, at least in my mind, is what we're doing here tonight and what we're doing tomorrow. Because, you know, I know when we went through this with that process, we did two days' worth of interviews, and at the end of the day, we passed around little sticky notes. The same three names were on all nine commissioners' papers. You know, the second rounder, time around, we selected a candidate. You know, so, you know, the big piece is to make sure we note what we want, and they understand what we want. That's why we're going through this process to have them here. So we can identify and they can identify what it is we want. I think that's, I think that's absolutely critical.
Cheryl?
Well, you had made a comment at one point in time about how you were interested in looking at the ones that didn't make the cut.
And I wrote that down.
Because I just want to share that that's, I think, the concern that we all have is.
Diamond in the rough or something.
Exactly. You know, I mean, how can we do that in a way that protects the?
Anonymity?
Yeah.
Big word for me.
Okay, so my question.
I am so impressed, Bob. Yes, that, you know, that we could accomplish that and not have it violate, you know.
So how, how is it possible for us to see all the resumes that you receive, even the ones you passed on? Because it's, I think I said this yesterday about the pension, it's important to me to know what I'm saying no to.
It is possible for you guys to see all of the resumes, see the database. It would not be in printable form that would be delivered to you as a board for discussion, but you would have an opportunity to see them individually and view that information from the Gov HR side.
So if we saw one, if I go through them all, say you got 30, and I go through them all, and then you come out with your seven to 10, and I saw somebody in there that just struck me, why aren't we interviewing that person? I would be able to call you and say, you know, Joe Jones, what did you not see or what? Because I see something here that.
But this would be the time where I'm going to make my pitch that it wouldn't be Joe Jones, that you could present that information to us without the names, which would then protect the individuals, that we wouldn't have to worry about their anonymity or Googling them.
Or where they're from, even? I mean.
But will it protect? That's a question.
Well, let me, let me try and satisfy all three. Your scenario is great. Yes, we can get to that one. We can remove names. We haven't, I have not done a search like that, but I'm excited to have that opportunity to review, remove names and personal identifiers from the candidate listings. I would still encourage that that be done on an individual basis and that you review through the Gov HR site, though, that information in a way that we've removed the names, but it's candidate two that you like that's not on there. Because if we, if we print, provide that documentation without the name, the cities they worked for, the companies they worked for, it, there isn't anonymity, I like it. That's not the, we won't achieve that. But I think we can achieve you guys going in and looking at the information, going in looking at it without name and numbering the candidates, and then if I pick numbers six, 12, 13, and 40, and you say, how about two, that's a perfect conversation that we can have.
Okay, I like that, too, because like I said, I want to know, because there might be something that we're looking for that we didn't get to tell you or just a feeling about somebody that we would like to meet.
Yeah, let me go back and review our technology capabilities in order to do that. I'm confident that we can provide that because I think it's a very reasonable request, and then I will confirm for the board.
Okay, we'll go with Dan and then Bob.
Well, in trying to give them the privacy that they need, we still need to know their years of experience and those kinds of things. We'll get that.
Yes.
I don't know that we need to know if they're a man or woman. I wouldn't care. I would tend to want a woman anyway, so in case any of you're wondering.
Smart man.
Yeah.
I like to learn more and more every day, Dan.
I have seven nurses, and they make me look like a genius. So, but I, so we would get the heart of the information minus their name, minus their sex, other identifying.
Yeah, that will be the goal, and something I should have mentioned in the presentation, but I do not. Gov HR takes extreme pride in our recruitment of a diverse candidate pool. So we participate in a number of different organizations that help diversify our application pool, and we take that seriously. And part of our advertising is to very specific, sometimes left off, diversity pools that we will get the candidate, we will get our brochures out to those very specific organizations that sometimes are not the same ones we traditionally think of.
The other side of this is, you know, we're paying them to do a lot of this for us, too, with their expertise to weed out some of this. So I'd like to think, too, though, time the whole process is through, that what they have provided us would satisfy. If we're not clear, to me, if he hasn't succeeded in that, and then we just haven't been clear on our expectations, I believe. You know, but I'd still, I guess, there's a fine line between wanting to see X amount of candidates or just see what they believe makes the good fit, you know.
Dan?
And I kind of agree with that. I would like to know those things without interfering with the normal process.
Right. It would be, like, if I called you and said, why aren't we interviewing two, it would be a very strong.
That might happen after we get his suggestions.
Maybe, yes, what I mean.
Because I, he has a normal process, and I don't want to taint that.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to tell him what to do at all. I would just, yeah.
I want to tell you what to do.
I assume that.
I'm trying to break her of that, but hey.
James, is it achievable without moving heaven and earth? Does it feel?
What, you telling me what to do?
No.
Getting a great administrator for us.
What we're describing is.
Yes. I, again, this will be a slightly different than I've done, but it seems very reasonable and to satisfy, and I appreciate the comments there and the desire that you guys have all suggested, and that scenario that Carol presented earlier of here are our recommended candidates, and if you find something lacking in that from what you've reviewed and what we've provided you access to without names, that's when we can have that conversation. So something came up on social media, I just overlooked it, whatever the reason is, we can have that discussion.
Nice.
Great.
So do we want to, back to the, how do we want to proceed from here? Do we want to come up with an ad hoc to, as he said, go through some of this initial stuff before, like approving the brochure and things like that, just to the point where we're down to a few? You still don't want to do that?
I still, I mean, I'd like to have all of our voices heard and as many eyes looking on it as we can. And again, I think at some point, you know, the person that applies is going to expect, if they go through this process far enough, that it's going to be public, you know. So I could be the only one that feels that way. So we are a group of seven, so.
Any other thoughts on that, Dan?
I agree. I want it to be full board.
You want all of us to have some input on it?
Yeah.
Okay. But we don't have input among ourselves is what's important. If he sends us the brochure, we need to send him our comments, not each other, just him. Just James.
And I would also add, if, after you've interviewed us and you're not clear on what we want, because I imagine you're going to have a gamut of.
Seven different.
If you watch any of our videos, you can see that. But if you're not clear, you know, I guess, you know, you're probably professional enough, but make sure you come back to us and say, look, I'm not clear in this area or whatever, so.
I have no problem sending drafts out to the whole board and receiving direct comments. Take a red pen to it and scan it and send it back to me or however you're comfortable doing it. What I would encourage you, though, is to keep that timeline tight, to keep that turnaround, to not have an expectation that we're going to get another draft. I'm certainly willing to do it, but I know it's important that we move through the process, particularly this early stage, pretty quickly. Because while the recruitment announcement and the recruitment brochure are important, it's important to get them out there. The brochure, maybe we can add it for a little bit longer, but this recruitment announcement, I really want to get it out there because the quicker we can get it out there, it's the one-pager, it's the quick hitter, that folks out in the community, out in the candidate pool, know you have an opening. There's a lot, you guys all know you have an opening. There's a lot of folks out there that don't. So that one-pager, I'd really like to get out next week, just the announcement to say, hey, don't do anything that you, that you might regret because you might have an opportunity here, and then we can really hammer through that recruitment brochure if that's okay with the board.
Carol, doesn't it seem fair that if things are sent from James to us, that there's a timeline, like respond within 24 hours, and if you don't respond, then?
Absolutely. And we all know for the next couple of weeks, check your email every single day to make sure that we're right on it. Okay? Is that possible?
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying because I want to make sure we don't violate any open meetings thing by giving, all of us giving her our.
No, not me.
But James.
James, don't respond, don't imply, don't tell me.
I want, I want to clarify. It's one-to-one communication between the document I'm sending and the comments back.
And you tell us when you need it back, and if we don't get it back, then you ignore us.
There you go. And we will all promise to check our emails daily to make sure we get things back.
If it comes to us and we have a meeting and we have a discussion about it, then it's, then it's all public. But if he sends us an email and he's showing us.
I think that's fine.
That's, maybe.
Okay.
Okay, but sorry you have to deal with all of us.
It's my pleasure.
You'll say that after the end, I'm sure.
My pleasure.
Poor nod bunch. Does anybody else have anything before I let the public speak if they would like to? Does anybody out in the public have any comments or questions or anything they'd like to say? Yes, Ryan, you have to step up to the podium, though. Thank you.
I was just kind of curious with having the full board, will that restrict the amount of candidates that would apply? Because people might be secure in one position and looking for opportunities elsewhere, but they don't want to be, you know, they don't want it in the newspapers and stuff and, you know, jeopardize their current position.
I think, I think that.
We're not getting names.
We're not, we're not going to get names, and I think it probably would not become public until we probably get down to the last.
Seven to 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
As many as we want to come, when they come here to interview, at that point, it would be public because they would be here in this room with us, and that would be the point. Even when they send us the binders, I think, it doesn't necessarily, well, it may become public at that point. Yeah, but, yeah, your microphone's on.
If you would like to discuss the binders during a public meeting, then they become public. So that's the point where I think you guys are going a little bit different in your choice of other communities, but it's perfectly fine to do that as a public exposure. The candidates to your question will understand at that point in the process. They can still apply, they can go through the early stages. They will just be made known that at this point, you're becoming public, and you may have a couple candidates that do withdraw because they don't want, they don't feel that confidence. But it's very hard to project if you will or won't have any loss at that point. You're still going through quite a good process before you get to the public discussion of candidates.
Any other questions?
Yes, if you don't mind me asking one more.
No, go ahead.
Now, you emphasize finding a good fit. Now, if you get 30 candidates and you can't really find a good fit out of the 30, are you still going to recommend the top five, or are you going to stretch out the advertising until you can find a better fit?
That's an outstanding question. There have been searches that Gov HR's done where we've come back and we've recommended. We need a longer time with an advertising pool. Finding the right candidate is what we want to do, not finding five to interview. So I don't anticipate we will come back and ask for a longer advertising period, but it can occur.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, please do.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments or things you'd like to see in an administrator or anything at all? That would be helpful. No? Okay, bring it back to the board. Does anybody else have anything? Dan?
This is going to be exciting. I'm looking forward to it. Yeah.
I think so.
I think, I think the process, making sure that we do the process correct is the important part, and I think, you know, we obviously have made the first step toward that, and I commend the board on their decision to allow for that. When I first made the recommendation, I wasn't sure anybody quite understood what I was asking for, but it really sounds like we're getting there.
Tom?
Yeah, if James needs particular information about the county or photographs for the perspectus brochure, or he just needs local information, I'd be glad to volunteer to do that. You know, it wouldn't be any decision-making over the process, but.
And I met with James today, and he asked very good questions about our community and kind of a place it is to live, and all kinds of things that I actually wasn't even expecting. But finding the right person who will fit in our community and fit with this organization is the most important thing.
I did tell him about our most popular ice cream shop in town, so he's getting an idea of the county now.
Yes, absolutely. Anybody else?
If I may?
Yes.
One more request, if folks are watching on TV. One more request, if folks are watching on TV, if you want to take a screen, take your phone and take a picture of the, what's on your TV, can they see that on TV?
Yes.
That, that link to please call the chairperson to get it sent to you? Or please, you can go directly to the HTTPS address that you see on your screen to fill out the survey. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Chris, did you have something to add? You have to come up to the microphone if you want to be heard. Please.
I was just.
All the way up to the microphone.
Chris Kramer. I was just going to ask the commissioners if they would like, we can get that link on our, on our homepage.
Please.
And so, yeah.
Sarah wrote that down that she was going.
Okay.
She's got it. I saw her making that note.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.